Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Tonight, we begin our, I guess it's December, so this is our last meeting of the year. Nice cold night for it. We begin our invitation with Barry Snow, and he's the children's pastor of Solid Worship, Solid Rock Worship Center, followed by Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Dear Heavenly Father, in this Christmas season, we pause to worship you. You are the light and our hope. You are the wonderful counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, the Prince of Peace, and the one whose kingdom shall never end. Before any decision are made tonight, we acknowledge that you alone are our Lord of our city, of our leaders, and of this meeting. We humbly confess our sins to you, God, forgive us when we have not walked in your ways. Cleanse us, renew us, and create within us clean hearts, oh God. And thank you that Christmas reminds us that grace came near and that forgiveness is possible. Father, we thank you for our community, our families, our freedoms, and the blessings that you have poured out on Oak Hill, West Virginia. And thank you for our mayor, our council members, our first responders, our educators, our business owners, our volunteers, and all who serve the public. We thank you for every person who works daily to make this city a better place. We thank you for the unity, for the progress, and for every good thing that has happened in this year, because we understand that all of it is from your hand. And now, Lord, we ask that you would, we ask you now for wisdom, just as you guided the wise men to the Savior, God, our leaders tonight. Grant them wisdom that rises far above human understanding, wisdom that is peaceable, just, and honorable. Give them knowledge to make informed decisions and understanding to grasp the issues that affect every corner of our community. Help them listen well, work together, and trust and treat one another with respect. Give them clarity, insight, and patience in every discussion and decision. We ask that your hand would rest upon each leader present. Strengthen them when they feel weary. Protect their families. Surround them with wise counsel, courage, and compassion. And Father, we pray also for our community. Let the peace the angels proclaim at Christ's birth rest upon our city. Bring comfort to those who are grieving, help to those who are discouraged, and provision for those in need. Bless our schools, bless our neighborhoods, bless our churches, bless our businesses. Protect our city from harm, division, and danger. Let this community be a place where people feel safe, valued, and welcomed. And as Christmas lights shine across our homes and our streets, may your light shine in every heart. May joy, generosity, peace, and love fill this meeting and got everything done tonight. Jesus, we place this meeting in your hands. May every decision honor you, may every conversation be marked with respect, and may your presence guide us in all we do. We pray this now in the holy and precious name of Jesus, the newborn King, the Savior of the world, the Lord of all. Amen.
By the United States of America, into the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. I now call the word of the City Council Meeting, Oak Hill, West Virginia, December eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Our clerk will now call our rule.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Here.
Councilman-at-large William Hannabass.
Here.
Board one, Diana Janey.
Here.
Terry Van Buskerk.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Board two, Chris Gill.
Here.
PJ Elder.
Here.
Steve Buskis.
Here.
Thank you. All right, let's begin. You have already the minutes in your packets. You may begin to accept them, please.
Mayor, I'm going to accept the minutes.
Let's do the first set more than two.
Okay. For the first set of minutes from the session.
Thank you.
And I second it.
The motion and second to accept our first set of minutes tonight. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? And second.
Mayor, I'll move to accept the second.
You mean, I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve our second set of minutes. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Next will be our treasurer's report. You say?
I motion to, okay, the treasurer's treasurer report.
You have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to accept the treasurer's report. Those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. This is moving on to our citizens' comments. Mr. James Burke is here, and he's asking for support for the warming center here in Fayette.
Hello, City Council. We've been in talks with the Southern Appalachian Labor Schools to possibly use their building for a warming center to help people that are adversely affected by wintertime, to have a place to get warm, possibly get something to eat, and if they need services, that we could triage them for services. Because Southern Appalachian Labor Schools get some of their support and financing from the city at times, and because we want to pursue this in the best way possible, we've seen it fit to come to the City Council to see if we could get support from the city to open a warming center just for a few months in the wintertime. It will be something that we have open full time, probably just till February.
All this will be done at the, maybe two?
Yes.
Or is there a dollar amount you're asking?
No, we're not asking for a dollar amount, we're just asking for the city's support and the effort.
Who's want to, who's want to operate it, maintain it, monitor it, put safety in place, all those kind of things you get to do.
Southern Appalachian Labor School is working with the people in the city to try to get all the inspections done that they need to get done right now. They want to, somebody from the city to come and give them a capacity rating if it is acceptable, and they are going to manage it there, but if we started a warming center subcommittee and officer prices on that committee, and we are interested in having police or EMT to be present there, if that's a big.
Is this something that the health department have to look into to make sure that it requires us?
I would assume.
Okay.
As well as the fire marshal.
That's what I was fixing to say, I think the fire marshal would actually be the one that would give you your capacity.
Yes, and Southern Appalachian Labor Schools is in the process of getting their fire systems and everything inspected right now so they can prepare for the fire marshal.
Team.
And we would, we want the city's support, but we do plan on pursuing all those avenues the way that we're supposed to to get it set up. And we understand it will take some time, but we really wanted city's support before we tried to take another step.
Any other questions for Mr. Burke? Or any questions? Well, I think it's a pretty good idea, it's very helpful. Once everything is in place, just come back and let us know, and we'll review it, I guess, and go from there.
Okay.
Thank you, James, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to our unfinished business, number one, the recommendation to vest authority of the city manager to settle claims set forth against the city of Oak Hill in civil action, number twenty-four dash C dash one-two-two in Circuit Court of Fayette County, West Virginia.
This is regarding a court case that we discussed at the last official, what you're going to be. How much of this we want to speak about in the session, directed by our attorney, that council will be able to, or need to get the claims settled soon.
I'll, I'll make that motion that recommend to best whatever authorities he needs get that done.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to vest the authority in city managers to settle legal claims against the city of Oak Hill. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? That motion is carried, thank you. My second, tonight is the ARC grant update, and Director of Parks, Josh Sappio, will be explaining.
Council Mayor Briscoe, I'm going to read my notes here. The city of Oak Hill in Fayette County is receiving grant funding via the Appalachian Regional Commission grant for Needles Eye Park, including trail development and trailhead improvements. The ARC grant totals approximately one million dollars. In October of two thousand twenty-three, John Tuggle with Region Four presented to you during the council meeting that two hundred ninety-four thousand would be contributed from the grant for Needles Eye Park if Oak Hill was, was willing to match fifty thousand dollars. A motion was made and granted for the city of Oak Hill to contribute that matching fund of fifty thousand dollars for the total of the budget. In the interim, the New River Gorge Regional Development, Development Authority, the NRG RDA, received funding for Needles Eye Park from the earmarked CDS spending for the DOI grant funding. This DOI grant funded most of the trailhead improvements as phase one and accomplished the current and completed Needles Eye Trail System that we currently have on the ground in the park. Because Needles Eye Park received the DOI funds to achieve the trail system and phase one of the trailhead improvements, the needed budget has narrowed. The ARC grant funding for Needles Eye Park has been reduced to include phase two of the trailhead improvements that were not included in phase one. Because of this reduction in the work, we are, we are requesting the engineering firm has helped us identify the remaining work for phase two of the trailhead improvements to be a total of one hundred fifteen thousand. Our match contribution of fifty thousand is included within this total of one hundred fifteen thousand. This one hundred fifteen thousand will complete the remaining work as phase two of the Needles Eye Park trailhead, and therefore complete the Needles Eye Park trailhead project. I'm here to inform you that the original match of Oak Hill's contribution of the fifty thousand dollars to the Needles Eye Park portion of the ARC grant funding will, will give Needles Eye Park the completion of phase two trailhead improvements. I want to reaffirm your support for the fifty thousand dollar match. It is my recommendation that council approve the retention of the fifty thousand dollars to, a match to the project, even though the original concept budget has been reduced to one hundred fifteen thousand, to include what is needed to accomplish the phase two trailhead. So I'm here to ask for your support to maintain that fifty thousand dollar match, even though the funds have been reduced to one hundred fifteen thousand, and that would complete phase two of the trailhead improvements.
So, Josh, it's already been done, you're just going to pay it for it now?
The, the money was set aside based on the October two thousand twenty-three council meeting and the motion to new forward with that fifty thousand dollar match. The money is there, it's sitting aside. We're, we're waiting to, to, to distribute it to, to the ARC bank of those accounts.
But we've already approved that fifty for that, right?
That, that's correct, and, and, and that fifty thousand was, was to accompany the two hundred ninety-four thousand dollar match from the county for that grants.
So we were supposed to get two hundred and four for our fifty, but instead the budget has been reduced to not be getting one fifteen.
And that's because of the DOI grant funding that completed the majority of the project. So now it's been narrowed, we only need one hundred, one hundred fifty thousand dollars finished for phase two of the project.
We're getting the same amount of work.
We don't have to go another fifty now, we've already got that fifty set aside, right?
No, I.
Sorry, set aside the budget.
I'm here to reaffirm your blessing based on the October two thousand twenty-three where you made a motion to approve the fifty thousand dollars to accompany the two hundred ninety-four thousand. That two hundred ninety-four thousand is no longer, it is now one hundred fifteen thousand.
We've already set aside the money for that, I'll make a motion that we sit down and continue to do the fifty thousand. I mean, we're not going to sit here and say, well, you know, so it got dropped, we're going to take it back.
I second it.
I appreciate you coming and just giving that update, though, because, I mean, we don't know, but let us know how the park is coming along and what money is where our, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's, that's very informative.
With this, this our granting is moving forward, it's been a long time coming, and it's finally moving forward. Progress is being made, and so.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to accept Mr. Sappio's report of the ARC grant update. All those in favor? And to continue on with me, brother. All right. I'm, I need a motion, I'm sorry.
I made that motion.
Thank you, guys. About to fall asleep, okay, so bad. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the ARC grant update. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed?
Ah.
Thank you very much. Wish you just need to stay with me with a hat pen every now and then. All right, our new business is to appoint a representative to the New River Gorge Towns.
So they approached us and asked if we would appoint a representative from the city to the New River Gorge County, NRG Towns group, which is that coalition that's formed to help promote the entire area of the New River Gorge. So, um, is that what Mr. Love? Mr. Love and Allison, and yeah, they're, they're part of that group, so. They just asked if we had a, an official, if we would point an official representative from the city to settle on that. Give it away to you on that recommendation. If, if, if you're dealing with council that wants to settle, I would like to, but I would also like for your, either Hannah or Brooke to be an officer, if that's okay.
You said he would settle this?
Yeah.
Good. I'll make the motion for Chris Meadows to be the representative.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, then our city manager, Chris Meadows, will be appointed to the NRG Towns group. All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? That motion is carried, thank you. Item number four is a resolution to accept the FEMA grant for the fire department chief, you need to.
We would like Tyler to present a video, which is a sample of what the plan will do in regard to recruitment for our fire department. Say, the manager reporting, second, so let's see.
Listen, heavy truck extrication.
This video is an example of what the title is of this grant we're receiving. It's titled Recruitment and Retention. This is a video that we're proud to be part of, that Fire Association had created this for our recruitment tool for the county. But now that we've received this grant, we want to dial in on recruitment and retention. And John McGuinness took lead on this, working with myself, Demita, and Hannabass was a part at the end of his term as city manager, but this was delayed. It actually started in twenty-four because of government delays, but we are here now, we have received this. And please understand, it's not eight hundred and seven thousand dollar check to be made in city or department. It's a submission of expenditures in response. John's going to sit in on this with the city clerk and city manager in regard communications with the grant, and it'll be kicking off the first of the year, but you'll see it's titled also retention, and there's a lot of incentives to bring new firefighters along, the cost for firefighters and training, and it, it just leads into a very positive aspect of our part. But John can speak a little bit more in regard to the ins and outs of the grant. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Yeah, so two years ago, I started working with this, and, and part of my job at Nicholas County is emergency service coordinator. I, I get to see a lot of grants every day, and this one caught my eye. And I approached Timmy and approached Gil, and I asked them their opinion. Everybody seemed to start on this, and that's when I started, and it works with Demita and Val. A year ago, of course, the government shut everything down with grants and everything, so we re-applied, changed our figures, because our run numbers and budget things changed from year to year. But one of the key aspects was the narrative I changed, and because of our hardship through the city, us losing revenue from the hospital. That played a big part in getting this grant this year. There's a breakdown of this per year, you know, our, our first year totals will be right at about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, and it's broke down into like twenty different categories. But this runs out twenty twenty-nine, you know. However, I felt with getting this award, this is not only going to help the fire department, but it's going to help the city. And, and that was one of our big pushes, because you all have always taken care of us, and we greatly appreciate it. So now we just wanted to do something that's going to help the city, help the budget, and us getting better and moving along in the future. But the cost of equipment, insurance, everything is going through the roof now, it's like everything else. But being able to, just for instance, save twenty-five thousand dollars on turnout gear for our guys per year, I mean, that's big. You know, that is tremendous, and that's just one of the, the few things on this list, but we're excited about it. I'll be working with Val every month, because at the end of every month, we'll go through everything with payroll and everything. And only the good thing about this two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, it's all reimbursed straight back to the city. So that's big, but I'm free to answer any questions, and, and I'm pleased and happy to get this kicked off and moving forward.
So, I guess to kind of maybe clarify up a little bit, the, the, what the city has budgeted for the fire department.
Yeah.
Then that grant is going to take over, take in place of that, so.
For, for certain items.
For certain items, for most, most of the items.
Yes.
So that in turn is going to help the city budget out drastically.
Drastically.
So it's a win-win situation.
Oh, yes.
The fire department in for the city.
Yes.
And there is an expiration date on it, right, twenty twenty-nine?
Twenty twenty-nine, yes, sir. Yes. We've, we've had several discussions with Chris and, you know, about moving forward and what we, where we need to be and everything, but this is just going to free up money for both of us, so it's definitely a win.
Now, it won't completely eliminate what vegetary items, some operational expenses like your utilities, for instance, you know, that'd still be part of the city budget, but your stipends that you're paying your firefighters, the equipment purchases, and upkeep with equipment, a lot of that through training, extracurricular training. If we send firefighters to another city or another state, it's included in this, and it, it's live item. It's very specific in regard to what you could spend the funding on, but a big thing is the stipend for firefighters. It's in your budget, that's going to relieve the city of that for you.
It's part of the big retention.
Yes.
It's part of it.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the retention, you know, how does that work?
Yeah, so this year, we're awarded fifty thousand. this year we're awarded fifty thousand dollars to help with with payroll and things of that nature, but as far as other things with our re-retention, uh we have incentives, so per quarter, our top five responders will be awarded a hundred dollar gift card per quarter. You know, so there's twenty thousand dollars set back for that. That's one thing about it. Uh, the extra advanced training, uh, you know, a lot of the new firefighters will get their basic training, new equipment, stuff like that. The ones that's been there a while, like Chris and Timmy and myself, there is stipulations on advanced training and officer training that is also paid for. Uh, there's also things on there as far as the new firefighters for uniforms, but there's also things in there for all of us as well for stationware, whether we get, you know, we usually get jackets for Christmas or something like that. That will be covered under this per year. So little things like that makes a world of difference, and it shows our firefighters that, hey, we're looking out for you. We're taking care of you. You you spend a lot of time coming out for three o'clock, leaving family events, so it's one of those things to give back to our firefighters, which we like to do.
That's your retention side.
Yeah.
Incentives. And like I say, a big thing that we saw immediately was it's going to help the city's administration of their general budget. It's going to relieve the city budget for four years. That stipend is paid out to them.
They had tremendous help.
And it's coming at a better time.
Yeah, better time.
But that video you just saw, we're planning on doing a video with Oak Hill Fire Department, and that can be paid by that grant also. That's going to be a recruitment.
So we have till twenty twenty-nine to to spend those funds?
Yes, ma'am. Each year we're allocated so much. And like I said, each month I'll come up with Val one day a month, get everything, we'll send it in the federal government, then they'll reverse, reimburse everything back to the city.
But it's all through the city.
Yes.
You're starting that January, right?
Sure. Yeah, so we'll start it in January, and then I'll come up the first week or so of February with Val, and we'll start the reimbursement phase for the first month.
I guess you need a motion to accept the resolution. I make that motion to accept the resolution.
I'd like to second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the FEMA grant for the fire department. All those in favor? Uh, all opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. McGuinness.
Thank you all.
We appreciate y'all's support.
Thank you.
It's like, yeah.
And moving on to number five, our resolution to pursue a grant for designation as a national historic district.
Okay, so I know this has been before council, or you all had a uh demonstration or something like that. Someone came in from the state to talk about it. I I wanted to just try and get into the benefits of it. Now, a- as you know, in in Hinton, we've been a historic district since nineteen eighty-four. The historic district designation has allowed developers and um even small business owners to benefit uh from renovating their buildings. These buildings uh that are in whatever district is determined will be eligible to up to fifty-five percent of the renovation cost. Now, recently, you guys knew about a roof that's in this district that I proposed in where the um applicant could got back fifty-five percent of thirty thousand dollars. Imagine what they could have done if they had that extra money. Maybe they put that into a new facade. Maybe they put that into inventory. Who knows what they could do with it? So this is definitely a tool that we are lacking in this area. Now, is there any drawbacks? Sure, there's always a draw. Uh, if we apply for this grant, of course, we might not get it, but we've got to hire a consultant. The consultant will come in and look and see. They're going to look at about a hundred and fifty different buildings with the grant. So they'll determine, well, whether we should or should not have a district, what the district boundary should be, you know, I have in my head what I think it should be uh just from the general age of the buildings and the fact of the area that you really want to support, which is downtown, which is from the bridge to the bridge, and then coming back down towards the depot. You have uh a national historic building with the south building, you know, school. And there's possibility, I'm not sure Bill, but is the depot not, the depot is just somewhere down? You have two anchors for a district already. And several of these downtown buildings, definitely a problem. You know, some of these homes out here, the uh Baptist church, well, churches out here on the end, Methodist church, any of that stuff in between there, I mean, can include weddings, but, you know, we're we're talking about fixing up our downtown. This is a tool that we could really use. It's not going to cost us that much money. I've estimated that the grant probably will cost between thirty and forty thousand dollars. Uh, it's a fifty percent range, so some of the money that the chief saved maybe on that, I don't know, fired to try and support this mystery. But I really think this is a tool for development, and I will tell you, there is a developer that we had in Hinton. Uh, he, if you've been to Hinton, he reviewed the entire Ritz Theater. He built the Market Restaurant. He has renovated one whole floor of the Currie Head Town. He has renovated the place where Our No Cafe is and their their houses. He has renovated the guest house, which is a great B and B downtown. And when he has done all of that, he touched things. Now, granted, he is a multimillionaire. Well, there's a multimillionaire in Hinton, there's one with him. You know, there's people that are just going to continue to come to this area because it is a New River Village. And I feel like I'm preaching up here, but I really think that this is a, this is just a win-win for the community. And then the consultant may then again say, well, you know, your district doesn't qualify. Well, I mean, we didn't hurt anything in trying, other than the fact we're at twenty thousand, but we know that we've already got two pieces of it, so there's got to be at least a little bit of deposit. So I'm just, I'm asking council to score a resolution. I've been working kind of on the side for that grant, and I got a few strings to pull in for Austin. I think we did it, I think we forget it. But um I just, I I need a resolution, and I got to get some letters of support, and I feel like you said a little bit too much to get with this issue.
Would that affect, and if so, how would that affect the people that own residences in that district?
So the residences, if they do work on the homes, they could also qualify, depending upon how much work they do and the age of the home. There'll always be some homes in these areas, like from there to the park. There's a few in there that are new homes, you know that. They're not going to qualify, but there is some, you know, some probably classic architecture between here and there that could qualify, and I think the project has to be over five thousand dollars before you can file an application to get money back. But I mean, what's a roof cost now? Well, it's thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars for a cheap roof.
Does this put restrictions on them on what they can do, like people that have homes in that district?
Well, here's what you can do. Um, if if you've ever been to Los Angeles Historic District or heard horror stories about that, I hope Los Angeles can listen to you. I'm the mayor over there. Um, they are very restrictive. Hinton is not very restrictive. You can choose what you want to enforce. The main thing to enforce is the facades. You don't want them to change what the F C leaders give and slips them. You don't want them, if they've got rounded orange windows, you don't want them to change that. Now, if they have um regular old windows, the historic commission does not like for you to put any of those things. Can't allow them in the second floor. Second floor of all buildings that come down from Hinton probably have, uh, there have been windows in. Plus, from from the ground level, you can't see them. No, that's just something that Hinton came up with. That doesn't mean that's what we have to do. And who knows what kind of applications you might get, and if there's no applications all the time. She would be the first person to review this. If we establish a district, we'll have to also establish a committee to review those. And they would review anything that once, that people would want to change, that might be maybe go against what the uh district's values, but at one time in Hinton, we had a case where we only allowed, if you had a metal roof, you could only put a metal roof on it, put bushes. So there's there's things like that. Well, and somebody comes like, well, I want to put shingles on another one. Well, you know, that's what the committee is to about. So anyway, besides me rambling on, what I would just like to see is if we can get, if I can get permission to apply for the grant and council's support, we could make decisions. If if they say we qualify, we can make decisions as to how how strict we want to do this.
The restrictions are in the form of our city ordinance.
They are, but it's led by a book of guidelines developed by the Department not the State Historic Preservation Office, but the National Southern Interior, the Department of Interior. They developed a guideline.
But you have to pass that as a law.
You have to pass as a law. So so this would be a multi-step process.
So if somebody wanted to do something, they they would go to a commission and not the B Z A?
Correct. You would establish a historic sidewalk commission. They would determine whether or not you want, you know, if if I think there's some historic district, and I want to say it's Shepherdstown or something like that, but you can only be brave and lively going, you know, it happens, something like that. I mean, you can get that restricted, and somebody comes and says, well, I want to paint my house yellow. Well, they haven't did it before, you know, so they're going to make someone say street. But that's an extreme example. Mainly what you'll get is people want to change the roof. They uh have a a really pretty wood door on it. It's just not, you know, it's a bow or something, and they want to replace it with a metal door. So that's the kind of things that you get with a certain commission. But the good thing is, is you also get the big fifteen thousand, uh, hundred and sixty thousand dollars into a downtown building to uh replace the on the windows, the doors and all that fun stuff, and repaint the brick and make it stable again and great for housing and business to build. That's what we, that's what we're looking for.
I think it sounds great, and anything that we can do to promote and kill or help folks kill. I'd like to support that. So I'd like to make it to adopt this resolution for you to pursue a grant for designation of a national historic district.
Excellent. I'll sign. We have a motion in a second to accept the proposed, excuse me, the resolution to pursue a grant for designation as a national historic district. All those in favor? Uh. All those opposed? Motion is adopted. Thank you very much. Number six, a discussion and or action regarding private road donation.
So uh I sent this information to council uh recently. This is the road that connects nineteen with the shopping plaza with Krogers and New River Health. Um, this is a private road, and um with the donation of the road, he also wants to give us, see that piece of property to the left of the screen, um, that goes with the road. It's not very wide. Um, I might, I I will say that, and I think I've spoken to a couple of you, and I'm not supporting this. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but uh I wanted to bring it to you because it was brought to me, and um he recently made some improvements to the road. I mean, they went out and paved it, and it does have uh turbing. It doesn't have drop inlets or, you know, ditches that I can see. There's right, there's water standing on it. Chief and I was out there the other day when it was raining, and there's water standing on it, so you know, future fracking and freezing and stuff will happen. There's a bank supposed to be built. Oh, it's a lot, one or lot two. Is it a both? Okay, well, lot one and two, there'll be the the new Pioneer Bank built. Uh, we already got the permit in the application on it, um, so there'll be some utilities and stuff that we talked about, you know, if the council wanted to take in the road, I will definitely ask that the road be board and and not tight. That one looks paved and nice and neat, so. So this is completely up to you guys, whatever you feel. Um, I mean, you'll talk about it, you'll talk about it, this will bring to you.
I have I have some questions and concerns. Uh uh, you know, first of all, I want to say myself, along with, I think, everybody in Oak Hill is happy that that road was against the plan. And I hope it benefits the the taxpaying businesses in that area, all unmeld accounts. But I don't want to do something outside the industry norm. And I think Chris, you have uh, or city manager, you have a excellent source of information on what is within the realm of normal, and that's through the Metropolitan Planning Organization. I know the state of West Virginia would not do this. From from the experience when I served on the M P O, uh, for developments, they, you know, they're, they promote business, but at the same time, if if you're the one that's going to make money off of it, you need to provide for that infrastructure. And I know there are other areas in Oak Hill that are similar to this situation. And if we take that road over, I I don't see us being able to say no to somebody else, and I I don't, I don't want to go into detail, but I think all of us could think for a minute and realize there's other private roads that would that are put there for the development of business and would become public and publicly maintain the tax laws. Uh, I think it would be a good question for uh John Tuggle, I I guess he's still chair of the M P O, and uh and his uh fellow M P O members uh that are with the Department of Transportation, the D O H, and those people that that may have a uh a a protocol when you do this and when you do not, because I noticed this connects with a state road, and I, they're asking the city to do it instead of the state, so. So, and I I'm not saying I'm against it. I just want to stay, I just want to stay in the, in our lane and and not set a precedent that should not be set.
I know there was some earlier discussions about this, and that property that they wanted to give us, how are people like that that will live right there? We, there was talk about, uh, welcome to Oak Hill sign, and I went down out there and looked at it, and honestly, unless you build a sign up it's won't be high, you're not going to be able to see it because there's trees in front of it. So that's not the greatest place to put a sign, unfortunately, but that'd be, I think you'd get a lot of those signs out there, like our nice pretty one. And that's probably, you know, if if that was a better suited piece of robbery, you know, maybe that would be a carrot that they could throw at us, and I think that's why they threw the carrot at us, so.
Yeah, that that happened prior, that often, we throw a sign.
I'm also very glad that that's been paid out there along with everybody else, but if you would go back on, when this come up the other day or in our pocket, and when I seen it was on the gin, I remembered it being talked about before. So I took a good bit of time, and I went back through old agendas and, you know, looked in to find this when we presented to the city before, and it was presented in January of twenty twenty-three because of the sign, that was looking for the sign. So I went back and looked at that minimum and watched that council meeting of January twenty twenty-three, and at that time, if there was two proposals. The first one was a proposal for a sign, a piece of property, first sign in trade that the city would take it, take that road over. And it was noted that before, at that time, before the city would take it over, that proper drainage would have had to have been installed, the That proper drainage would have had to have been installed. The road base was not up to state road standards and that would have had to have been fixed. Before any of the paving would have been done, because at that time it was still a mess. It, it had a lot of potholes. And that the utilities would have had to have come across the road, because right now all the utilities are on. The opposite side of the road. So, um. There's a chance now when they build out there that there, well, they got two options. One is they can either try to bore under the road or they're going to have to open cut the new pavement that's there to get the utility. So. And that was one of the stipulations that was put on that back in January was that the utilities was made across or put across there. Drop in inlets, curb, that everything was brought up to state road specs. At that time, that motion. Was denied. It did not pass with that council. Ms. Chan, you may remember a little bit of that, but that did not pass with that council and the next. Motion that immediately followed was one to, um, trade a little piece of property for snow removal. And there was discussion about that, about how you, where to place it, how to put it. Um, public works going from here out to there and just doing a quarter mile section. And then, you know, picking the blade up and going off somewhere else. And then much more discussion about other properties, like you said, Mr. Handvast, that come in, you know, have to come into it. And so that motion denied or failed to carry. So then there was another motion put forth to table it to the. February meeting and at that time they would look at, uh, some of the expense and. Uh, what it would cost to maintain that if they did take it in, even if it was fixed later down the line, what it would be. And, and what the possibilities could happen by accepting that road. And then in the. February meeting, it was said in there that after the review of that, the council said after the review of that. That they decided that it wouldn't be beneficial for the city because of the, um. The wetlands that was there, the, the probability of others places wanting to come in. And the expense of having to upkeep that road for just that little sort of section. And it was said in that meeting that. It was determined that it would be bad business to do. So there was a motion. To table that indefinitely for that time and that motion carried. Uh, unanimous. So that, that's why it went from. On it, that, at that time that it went away. Um, myself. I'm personally not in favor of it. I've taken it in. I, I personally don't see a, a benefit to the city. What do you have any?
I, I've. Try to go a little bit of what Chris was saying there too. Because I, I've sat down and I've thought about this. There are pros and there are cons, but I believe that we have more cons with us taking that road. With sitting down and trying to support the drainage, everything else to get that road to where it would be even right. It would cost us more money to take that road on than it would be. Like Chris says, to just, uh, passing this thing. So I'm not favored for that either.
I really think that's why we kept tabling. It, it put all the expense on the city.
Mayor.
Hi, sir. I haven't, uh, never presented to the council. I don't know what it was. The only meeting I came to is subdivision committee meeting and. And I was told that once they, that if they, if they would, I asked them if they would subdivide it, would they? Take over the road and they said, well, I tell you what, once, why don't you fix the road since it's messed up? And I said, well, I can't just fix it out of the blue. But I'll tell you what I'll do. I will fix it with my own money. Once I sell or lease one of these properties, what I did, the ditching is being done as soon as I get a whole, get the okay from the comfort end. Guys that are out of New York, their heck to deal with. I can't get them to give me the okay to put a covert in. There's already catch basins there. It needs a ditch from. Rio side all the way down. Comfort Inn needs a covert to keep that standing water off the road and it'll hit that catch basin that feeds back behind the comfort ended the kitchen. They've already put conduit under the road. We had them do that for the utilities. There's no cutting the road now. We, we're there. Build a brand new road and we have to cut it right up. So the conduit's already been laid. You guys probably know that. They stuffed it up to you see. So the utilities are ready to be. My thinking is I don't need this parcel, this road parcel, you know, our business. I've been here for twenty years almost in Bay County. That road was like that before I got here. I don't want, I could essentially let that road go. And somebody else is going to claim it and it'll never be maintained. Same, same doggone boat we're in. So I said, okay, I'll fix it. Let me give it to the town. The benefit to the town is one, we never have to let it get in that condition again. People literally don't have to drive over that stuff again. Two. We, we just, we, we gotta find a way to keep our stuff nice, right? And it just, it's not like we're, our company's not just going to maintain that road forever. I mean, if I kill over tomorrow, what's going to happen? Somebody's going to get, end up with that road. Are they going to maintain it? Are they going to put three hundred grand into it like I did? Probably not. So I think the benefit to the city is the tax revenue that's going to come off of the businesses that come in, uh, by developing the property. That's how you pay for this. And, uh, that little sliver there that you see on that, on that parcel, it may not be, I don't know what you could use for, it could be used for something. It's on the main drag right there to your biggest B and O. Bucket in the city. Something could be done there, whether, I mean, you guys could figure that out, but. My thinking is let me get this road to the people that can take care of it forever. So we don't ever have to deal with that again. And two, let them also keep the whole parcel, the red cut out there and they can do something besides in, in the plaza. And, you know, that's. I think I addressed all the cons that I heard there, but. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer. That's, that's why I was asking to take the road over.
You mind stating your name for the record?
Yeah, Casey Baldwin.
Thank you.
Casey Baldwin.
Mr. Baldwin, I have a question. Can you slide that pipe down just a little bit taller? Okay, so you have parcel one and two for your bank, right? Okay, so you did the road and everything so that the bank would have a good road going into their lots, right?
Part of it for sure.
You have anything happening on the other side of that?
I had several calls on the other side. I had one big company that would have been such a home run for the area to do is that there's a deed restriction from Kroger in this plaza. They won't allow other. I'm not giving away who it is. It won't allow other, uh, it won't allow retail sales of groceries off. Off premium system such for consumption of food. And so, uh, that deal was dead, but that would have been a really good thing for the community. But I've had several calls. I've had hoteliers call me. I've done a hotel feasibility study. When the bank goes in, we're going to get that other side. Well, it's just a matter of time. There's only so many developable spots here, you know, and so up and down. So we've only got so much flat land and that's, that's in the, one of the two only. Shopping plazas in the area. Someone's going to come take it. And the bank is going to build a really nice architectural building. It's going to improve the aesthetics of the place. That'll help attract someone to take it. There's about two acres on that other side and it's, it's a good size lot to either. Get one big boy in there, get two, two different businesses. So the benefit to me is we don't ever have to mess this again, because you guys know how terrible that road is. I'm going to say it's here, it's that way before I got here. This parcel is off on its own and I'm paying property tax on it essentially for no reason. The easements, the travel easements are already there. They're, they're always going to be there. So the road can be used. Now's the time, right now to get the road in, in your own hands. So no one ever has to worry. This is the time. And it's, that's where I was. And we built this thing with West Virginia paving. Those guys are the biggest rope contractors in West Virginia. They're not building. That's, it's not likely we did a big pogo job out there. That thing was done right. The drainage is an issue, but like I said, we're, we're working on it as soon as he tells me, okay, which could, I called him twice today.
You said you built that with West Virginia paving? They didn't build that road. They just paved that road. They just.
They redid it.
They build and pave what was there. So they didn't do any sub work to build it to bring it up to the standards like.
I don't know who did this, but eighty-eight, eighty-seven, like that.
Any other questions for Mr. Baldwin?
You're putting the drainage in.
Drainage is there. It just needs a ditch. There's no ditch. The water runs off that hill and it's, it, there's nowhere for it to go other than onto the road. So it needs a ditch. From Rio basically all the way down. And if you, you can't hardly see it, but if you look where the comfort end is where that white truck, there you go. Okay. Keep going. Right about, there's a catch basin right there, right there. So that ditch just needs to be dug and the, the other entrance into the hotel can scroll back down a little bit. Needs a covert right there because that water's puddling up. You can, you can almost cut it in half. You can take this, this half and run it toward Rio. There's a, a way to drain it that way. And then the other half will run down toward the comfort end, but it's got to get underneath that entryway on the left-hand side, because that's where all that water's puddling up and running on the road. That's where the issue's going to come. If they give me the green light, when they give me the green light, it'll be about. Another seven thousand, ten thousand dollars roughly to do this, and I'm willing to do it to get this thing done and finished. And that's it. But all that water's going to run along the road net ditch. It'll hit the covert underneath that entryway and run right into that catch basin there. Right now has nowhere to go. It keep, it keep getting. And that's what's been the problem for thirty years.
So do you own that whole development out there there?
I own. The right-hand side where the bank bought, scroll down a little bit, you know, basically that plus the little piece there that I want to give you guys. But like I said, it, it, it doesn't do me any good to keep this property in. Someone will claim this property. Side unseen, these companies buy it, they're going to claim it and they're going to own it, not even knowing what they bought, just like the outfit out of New York that bought the detention basin by one side. They can't even build on it. They claimed it off of taxes and were stuck with it. Same thing can happen here and whoever's stuck with it isn't going to give a darn what happens. I give a darn. I live here. I, I give enough of a darn to spend three hundred thousand dollars. Have my own pocket. So. I just, I think it's a good idea. I think the tax revenue and. B and O you're going to give from this is going to pay for the maintenance for a very long time to take this in, take care of this for the. Chris, can you consult with them if you don't? Yeah.
Do we have a phone number? Is, is it B O W L I N G?
And so by consulting with them, they'll give a recommendation on what a municipality should and should not do with that.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
We're glad you came. Thank you.
So what would you all like to do?
Tell us for me to get some more information from the M P O and see what their recommendation might be.
Yeah, I might.
I believe I'll second that motion.
We have the motion and second. City manager. Will continue pursuing this project. All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Number seven is to discuss, excuse me, an act on employee incentive stip.
Uh, city council, that information, would you like me to discuss it or would you like to make a recommendation?
I, I support it. I, I would just. I will just. Like to put city manager as.
You making that motion, Chris?
I move to, uh. The, you know, let's be, let's talk about. We're talking about, uh. Employee incentive stipend in the year. And the amount currently two hundred and fifty dollars. For part-time employees, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, it was a hundred and twenty-five.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it was a hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five.
One forty-five. One twenty-five for part-time employees and one twenty-five for volunteer fire. And it was presented to me anyway that this would exclude the city manager and all I'm. Uh, you know, I'm obviously with all this theory, but I would like to include the city manager in, in that as well as. Well, as every other employee.
No, thanks for shooting.
I'll make a statement on that. If we vote on this and it passes. Then I just, and I'll vote on it because I am legal to vote on it. Everyone knows I am a member of the fire department, so I can, I can vote on that. But just put it in the minutes that I don't get this, being a member of council. That even though I'm a firefighter, I don't, I'm excluded from, I am excluded from this, but I will be voting on it. I just don't want any confusion out there that somebody would accuse me of voting on something that I'm willing to receive.
I'll move to approve the employee incentive stipend. This is called a really good.
I second it.
We have motion and a second to approve employee incentive stipend. All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Includes our new business. We have our department reports. You all read them in your packets. We have a motion to receive them.
Make a motion that we accept or to written.
You have second?
I second.
And all those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion is also carried. Uh, you have MS full report to me.
Uh, just a, just an update. Um, I have, uh, been discussing this with Thrasher regarding, uh. Our, uh, new application that has to be submitted to, uh, D P and, um, day word. So I'm working with Thrasher right now. To get all that submitted to this. They're going to handle all of the initial paperwork and submission through the data of staff yours.
Any council comments?
Uh, mayor.
Yes.
If we can, if Mr. Xavier is okay, could he present, um, the, the playground equipment report? That was given to us, if he's okay with that.
Okay, the playground, uh, report that I included in the, um, the council report. I'll just read it. So it's, uh, for the record. Uh, the city of Oak Hill pursued the purchase of the new city park playground equipment to replace the entirety of the pro playground with remaining funds from the L W C F playground grant after phase one complete. The city of Oak Hill received authorization from the land water conservation fund to proceed with procuring the necessary equipment. To rebuild the playground on nine thirty of, well, thousand twenty-five, September thirty. On the day of the approval, the equipment was ordered and the remaining funds were expended so as not to lose the funds that were rightfully ours when the grant was awarded to us. It was at this point that the city of Oak Hill began discussing the possibility of reusing the old playground equipment. Uh, at a different location within the city. Uh, we sought the council, the playground manufacturer, gain time to discuss the liability and feasibility of the old equipment being repurposed. They strongly advised against it and informed us that it is rarely done except for special circumstances. Our existing equipment is aged and would technically need to be replaced in a few years anyway, after the reassembly in some of the locations. This fact and the fact that the equipment is outdated and therefore it would be very difficult and maybe impossible to get replacement parts for this equipment. Replacement parts would be necessary after taking it apart. For instance, upright posts that were concreted into the ground would need cut off and replaced for the reassembly. Additionally, the city of Oak Hill would have to incur the cost of disassembly and the additional cost of installation of the equipment. As a certified playground manufacturer is required for that installation within this valley. It was our estimation that the cost for disassembly and reassembly could be around a hundred thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars to disassemble and fifty thousand dollars for reassembly. Not to mention the cost of the ground prep for the new playground, drainage, engineered wood fiber and engineered wood fiber playground board. This prep work would be yet another project that the street department would need to help with, among other projects that are already pending their work. At this time, it was decided that we would not reuse the equipment as it was not cost effective and we again sought the council of game time. And they informed us that we could recycle the equipment at a suitable recycling facility. After reaching out to local facilities, was estimated that we could receive roughly a thousand dollars for the equipment as scrap. This would require our manpower, our trucks and our time. Game time then informed us that, uh, popular method of reuse is to offer it to the community as scrap metal. And the release of liability would make this exchange acceptable. Someone could either take the equipment for recycling on their own or otherwise take the equipment for their own use. We decided that we would offer it as scrap to anyone that inquired about it and act on removing it. And we would not advertise it as that might cause more issues from the need to determine who got it if multiple parties wanted it. And we would not advertise it as that might cause more issues from the need to determine who got it if multiple parties wanted it. It would be a first come, first served basis based on that inquiry. On October eighth, the city of Oak Hill, the uh, city of Oak Hill Parks and Rec Facebook page created a post. That the old playground was coming out and the new playground would be installed. This post was to inform the public. Of the exciting news of the entire Blake playground being remodeled and to generally inform the public of the intentions of the work that was happening. Because that hadn't happened prior. Once this public announcement was made, it was decided that we would walk them through the scrap process we had decided. On and the subsequent release of liability that would need signed. We waited, no one stepped forward and no one inquired. We were preparing to take the equipment to the scrapyard. On October twenty seventh, I received word. Uh, that the church councilman Gil attended was inquiring about the equipment based uh, because they wanted it for their school. And to the bit, to build a memorial playground for a church member's young daughter who was tragically, uh, tragically died. I quickly obliged and contacted the church, ultimately speaking with Chris Gill, uh, Councilman Gill to make the arrangements. They made plans on their end to be present on the exact day that the city of Oak Hill was removing the equipment. So that we could set the equipment directly on their trailers. The church went to great lengths to haul off the equipment and we were grateful for this, especially knowing that it was not, uh, that it was going to a school. Uh, as well as to be a memorial playground for a child lost. It should be noted that from the public Facebook announcement on October twenty eighth to October twenty seventh. Not a single person in the community inquired about the old equipment and what was uh. What was going to happen to it. Until the inquiry was made by the church, but that that ultimately took it and signed the release of liability.
So is, there is a letter that they signed that they're totally responsible. We have no liability as a city.
That's correct, yes. And that was uh, advised by uh, game time and playground manufacturer that that particular playground equipment came from.
So it's pretty detailed.
Well, it was a very unfortunate uh, circumstance. Uh, that's a absolute. Narrative to explain the situation. We, we felt that it was uh, the best use of our, our municipal tax dollars to, to dispose of it in a way that we did. Happy Park Rec Department that it went to a, a facility um, as a playground.
It was advertised on Parks Recreation Facebook page, correct?
It, it was not advertised. It was just simply a Facebook post um, that, that. Displayed and told the, the public, the community that were moving forward, replacing the entirety of the camp of later.
You were estimating that it would be close to a hundred thousand dollars if it would have been relocated. Within city, within the city or something, correct?
That, okay. It would have to be installed by a playground manufacturer, therefore it'd have to be. Disassembled by.
But we would have had to incur that cost.
That's correct.
So it didn't cost us anything?
Uh, it, it did not cost us anything um, to disassemble it on our own um, and uh. That particular church made arrangements on their end uh, to be present at the point that we were just nailing it. And we simply took it from the ground right onto their trailers.
It, it reminds me. Several, several years ago, ten or fifteen years ago. The Board of Education. Offered the city, graciously offered the city. Used playground equipment that was installed behind the Rochelle Elementary and behind Paul's Millstone. And. I, I thought it was a fantastic. Deal for the Board of Education and us. And the deal was that we could have it, but, but the city had to uninstall it, remove it and put it where we want it fixed around back. We spent, I can't remember now, but a lot. Of man hours with heavy equipment. And once we got that playground equipment uninstalled, it was on service. And it was a, it was a total, and I'll, I'll blame myself for that. Uh, it was a, it was a. Boom doll. And I got us into it. But I, but I learned that. Used playground equipment. Is not very valuable. So.
Well, it has a, it has a longevity to it as well. And so that, that particular playground, which is why we wanted to replace it. It's on the tail end, but it's on there. So if we would have went through the. Process of reinstalling it, then we would have just had to take it out after years of plant.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you for that report, Josh.
Any further council comments?
At this Walgreens. Hey, um, one of the ladies that lives out Harlem Heights, Norma Travis. Um, she stopped me Thursday in Walgreens. They're looking to put a marquee sign at the entrance of Harlem Heights. Uh, to. For the community uh, restoration worship center. So they want to put a marquee out somewhere right in that beginning. Uh, that she said would have lights on it. So everyone could see it. And she's asking if it would be possible if they could also install a blessing box. I don't know what they need. For the marquee, that's something that's. If it's eligible to go there.
Did they have a spot picked out?
She just said at the entrance of Harlem Heights.
So that could be state road, right away or city property.
Yeah, and you'd have several things to consider there, making sure that we didn't want life cycle traffic or. That we couldn't long enough that way. That would be something I would definitely want to consider. Where of the location.
And two, you'd actually have to look into the zoning code to see whether or not they could actually put.
It's a lot more than you said.
So who do I direct to? Oh, this goes back down at Mendon. King Reggins was at one of our meetings. He was asking about uh, we would come and look about some streetlights and. Yes, for it's.
Okay.
So.
Sure. He just needs to get with us and let us know, you know, locations where you might want to be. Know who, you know, with us here at the office.
One does kind of night time. So we, so they could point out where the dark hair.
We can do that, right, Chief?
We can go.
Yeah.
And.
Well, Percy's scared of the dark. I'll get with.
Percy said he would offer his services to, let's see, that's what.
Okay, well, good.
Thank you.
You want else?
Yeah, I'd like to just commend all of the. The fest festive. Businesses and everything on Main Street again. As you drive down there, there's windows painted with decorations on there. There's windows. It's been vacant. It's got decorations in them again. I mean, it's not, you know, perfect. But it's moving forward and it looks good to see all that decorations and, and, and li- just a little bit of excitement going in. You, you drive. Uh, all on Main Street now and there's windows painted with all kinds of Christmas scenes on them and. And they got lights up in them and, and things setting in the window seals and decorations and, and it's nice. It's nice to see that again. And I, I want to thank those businesses for taking the time and the money and the effort to spice it up and, and bring, help bring Christmas.
Then I'd like to recognize everybody that participated in the Thanksgiving community dinner. Uh, it was like four thousand dinners that were prepared and um, I think it was a good community event, community effort and um. Just want to recognize all those people.
Any future agenda items, anyone?
Mayor, I've got one that. I guess it's a, be an agenda item. I, I don't know. I'd, I'd just like for the, the city manager to look into. I seen a news article. On, and, and I don't know that much about it other than it was a news article from W C H S on December the third. And there was a, a company, Mon, Mon. You know, I don't want to. Pronounce it wrong. Monsanto or something. Anyway, it was a company. And there is a, like a multi million dollar, a lot of. It's a settlement coming to um, West Virginia. And a lot of it has to deal with like PCBs and, and things like that. And I understand that. Um. I guess the legislature's going to have control over what happens to it. But I, what I guess what I'm saying is some of the people. Um. Down in Mendon are kind of wondering about. If some of that money's going to be spent for. Remediation or relocation or whatever they are. And I would just like to. Maybe if you could look into that and if there's something that, you know, maybe a letter of support. That may help them get something down there that the city might maybe is, we could give them a letter of support.
We'll do some investigation into that, see what. What it's all about.
Yeah, there's a big story about that. I believe it's on YouTube. Um, just search. Just search Mendon, West Virginia. I think it's called Impossible Town, something like that. Something close to that. All right, now, any other future agenda items, anyone? Any announcements? You have our Christmas parade, uh, Thursday at six o'clock. And there will be uh, some judging of the windows. Then after that, we'll be down at the depot. And the rail trail for some judging of the benches. There will be free food for everybody, lots of free hot chocolate. Things like that. So we're looking forward to it. Guys, don't forget the fire department dinners coming up. And I believe there's a police dinner, but we won't talk about that. Um. But you know, don't, don't forget those. And then a city luncheon's coming up as well and uh, you can, you can check the calendar for that, guys. All right. Our next regular council meeting will be January twelfth at six o'clock. All minds are clear, then let's consider ourselves adjourned. Everyone have a good holiday and we'll see you soon. And good night.